Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time I will call into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for May 4th, 2017, beginning at 7:20 PM. Thank you so much for your patience with us this evening. I would like to thank each of you for coming out and joining us this evening. We start our meeting with an opening ceremony. Would you please join Mr. Bowie-Hogg, leading the pledge of allegiance?
Please start in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hogg. And if you would all take a moment to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices, we would appreciate that to avoid disruptions to those around you. And if you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Our first program of the evening is something we're certainly looking forward to. Ms. Johnston, could you introduce? And we're so glad to see some students here this evening.
The Wood Elementary 6th Grade Cast and their director Judy Ray will present a song tonight from their musical "Susical Kids," which was presented on March 31st. Lead soloists are Ally Hogan and Jonathan Medlin. Mrs. Ray has taught in the AISD for 25 years with 23 of those being at Wood. And one of her loves is directing the choirs and the annual musicals. Many of the Wood seekers have gone on to be leaders in their junior high and senior high choirs and have often performed as members of a TMEA honor choir or in the all-state choirs. Tonight, the performers are wearing their susical shirts, but during the actual musical, the costumes and sets were full of color. Imagine, if you will, all the colors you have ever seen and maybe a few you haven't. That was the look of susical. Welcome to the Wood 6th Grade Cast singing "Oh, The Things You Can Think."
Now, that is a very unusual hat. I wonder what's under a hat such as that? It could be a creature they call it his hat who balances things on its head because it's flat. Or striped living pipes are from Upper Mount Beth. Or sort of a kind of a hat wearing-
Cat!
I can see that you've got quite a mind for your age. Why, one think and you drag me right onto the stage. Now that I'm here, there's no telling what may ensue. With a cat, with a sea and a thinker like you.
All the things you can think, all the things you can think, if you really try. Think of a trip on a ship to the vapor of it or the solid saloon. Think of a bird with a one feathered tail. Going on adventure down a dangerous trail. Ah! Think of a bird who flies up on a screen. Think of a kangaroo star out in the rain. Think of some moose with a trouble and sore. Think of something horrible and hairy, something sinister and scary that you never dared to think of before. Think of nobody here and the feeling of fear and the darkness of night. Ooh. All alone in your room as you're facing your doom. Think of a clover real bright. Oh! God, I hope I'm not scared. Too scared, too scared. Because they say color blue. Think of a shadow of a tree when you think about soup. When you think about soup. Soup, 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 soup. Soup. All the things you can think, anything you really think can come up with a few. Think of a trip on a ship to the vapor of it or the solid saloon. Think of a bird who flies up on a screen. Think of a kangaroo star out in the rain. Think of some moose with a trouble and sore. Think of something horrible and hairy, something sinister and scary that you never dared to think of before. Think of nobody here and the feeling of fear and the darkness of night. Ooh. All alone in your room as you're facing your doom. Think of a clover real bright. Oh! God, I hope I'm not scared. Too scared, too scared. Because they say color blue. Think of a shadow of a tree when you think about soup. When you think about soup. When you think about soup. Soup!
Wow, thank you so much for being here this evening. And to everyone else, that's going to be a hard act to follow. Thank you, that was wonderful. Next up, though, we have more good news. We have, once a month, we recognize our student of the month. I see this evening that we have Ms. Beverly McReynolds. Principal McReynolds, could you come up and introduce your student of the month, please?
Absolutely, and that is a very hard act to follow. President Sullins, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. There are a few things that bring as much pleasure and satisfaction as watching students overcome obstacles, reset their compass, and start to move in the direction of success and accomplishment. Abraham is with me this evening because he chose Venture and JROTC, and his path is clear, and we are in full support of him and his goals. Abraham is a fine, confident, and poised young man who consistently demonstrates leadership, citizenship, and responsibility. He embodies the characteristics of an authentic servant leader. His innate response is to serve and then to lead, and there are myriad examples of each adventure. Abraham has chosen a path that will ultimately allow him to pursue his goals beyond high school. His plans include college at UNT where he plans to participate in the ROTC program and earn a commission to the US Air Force. Abraham is well-known on our campus as someone always willing to provide a helping hand and lead when it is necessary. I've watched Abraham set his compass while at Venture and get a firm grip on his bearings. He has the determination, the fortitude, to achieve all of his goals. He is truly an emerging servant leader. I'm proud to present Abraham Cordova.
Thank you. Welcome, Abraham.
Oh, well, good afternoon.
We're very glad you're here this evening. This is a very special award and recognition you're receiving.
Yes.
The district is very large, and there's about 63,000 students. And six of them are acknowledged in here every year, so this is a very large honor for you. And I can see why. Your principal went on, it's probably hard to even listen to all of that wonderful stuff, but we want to make sure and hear directly from you. What are your plans? And you have us all, you know, we're listening to you, so please.
Well, my plans after high school is, of course, to go ahead and attend UNT, and I'm going to be at UNT for about eight years. And that's just so I can earn my commission into the Air Force and become a fighter pilot. And the difference between, normally what people say that I'm going to become a fighter pilot, or a pilot, or anything they would like to be, I say I will become a fighter pilot. And I will make my dream come true. And I am in the progress of making that come true. And, well, right now, I'm just super excited, and yes, I am nervous, but it's, hey, it happens, but I'm happy.
Congratulations, Abraham. And something that I want you to know is that we will be here backing you. We will be here cheering you on, and we will welcome and love to hear about all of your accomplishments. And should you ever decide to jump into teaching, we'll come on back. Come on back, anyway. And if you could wait for just a moment, Dr. Cavassos would like to come down and give you an award, would like to get a picture for you for the website as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I didn't want to miss that. Would you have some introductions this evening?
Yes. My introduction would be my mom. My mom, I would say she is my biggest supporter. Yes, I put her through a lot of troubles, ups and downs, but she's my mom, and she's been awesome. She's been helping me through, even through the worst, toughest challenges that life can hand you. And she still is here for me. She still hasn't given up on me, and I appreciate that very much.
Way to go, Mom. Way to go, Mom, congratulations. Yeah, there you go. Well, now we'll come down. Now, this is a trustee pin, and we know that you play like we're it every day. It is something to acknowledge how proud this board is of you. And so, we will be proud of you. We are proud of you now. We'll be cheering you on.
I know, appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And we have several student recognitions this evening, and what a wonderful opportunity we have to meet some more this evening, or we've actually met them this evening, we've met them and worked with them this year. We would move on to recognizing some very special students that work with us in an advisory capacity, the Student Leadership Advisory Board. Ms. Mays, would you like to take it from here, now that they wanted to speak with us?
Thank you so much. I am honored to be able to introduce to everyone watching and everyone here our SLAB students, which stands for Student Leadership Advisory. It is a group that's made up of the junior class presidents from seven of our high schools. And out of that group, there's also one senior who's elected to be president. And the president this year of our SLAB group is Jacqueline Garcia from Lamar High School. I'm going to allow her to share a few words. I do want to say that her SLAB partner was Ms. Jamie Sullins, president to president, who would have guessed? So, I'm going to give you a few minutes to please share something very special with us about yourself.
Okay, hello, I'm Jacqueline Garcia, of course. I am SLAB president, like she just said, sorry. And I represent Lamar High School. This year, SLAB got to do a lot of great things, like helping to serve campuses during AISD Day of Service, doing CTEI presentations in junior high schools. And now, we're looking forward to participating in the Page for a Day program in Austin. So, we're really excited for that. So, everything we have done in SLAB, and especially for me, that I've done it for two years, has all been equally enriching and enjoyable. And we're all very honored to be blessed with this opportunity to be a part of the advisory board. So, on behalf of everyone in SLAB, we would like to thank the board for this life-changing experience. And, like, I feel like I speak for everyone in SLAB. I feel like our high school experience would not be the same without this advisory board, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very well said. Next, coming up to the mic is Deisha Barner from Sam Houston High School, and I was honored to serve as her partner. Deisha, please tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. It was a pleasure to have you as my board member this year. About me, this opportunity was really wonderful because I've been in other groups with other people from different high schools, but it's never been in a capacity where it was all leaders who really want to make a change at their schools and in Arlington. And because I had the opportunity to be in this group, I was able to learn a lot from them and just kind of demystify, you know, the student experience at another school. And to see that even though we go to different places, we're all kind of the same, we have the same hard test to take, and, you know, the same daily obstacles. And it was just really great to be able to meet new people who have the same goals as you. And for that experience, I'm really grateful to you as well as the rest of the board. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well said. One thing she did leave off about herself is Deisha was a Richard Greene scholar this year. Okay, next, we have Nolie Vargas Kiraz.
Good evening. As she already said, my name is Nolie Vargas, and I attend Jamesbury High School. Being a member of the Student Leadership Advisory Board has given me many opportunities that I wouldn't receive as just a non-member, I guess you could say. Basically, it has given me the opportunity to become more deeply involved in my community. And I've gotten to meet these wonderful people that I've worked with at the various events that we've participated in. And I would just like to thank all of you from just the bottom of my heart for this opportunity to just be more involved and project my ideas into the community. So, for that, I thank you.
Thank you, Nolie, very well said. And I might also add that Nolie's partner was also Jamie Sullins. And in addition to that, Nolie will be the president of the SLAB for the 2017-18 school year.
Hello, my name is Emily Yanez, and this year, I was blessed with the ability and opportunity to serve as a SLAB member. And I really just wanted to thank you guys for being involved in this and allowing us as students to participate in an advisory board. I am on behalf of Arlington Collegiate High School, and so, for me, I don't really get traditional high school experience. So, this was new for me, and it was most definitely enjoyable, so thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And Emily's partner was Ms. Polly Walton.
Hi, my name's Taryn Kates, and I got to be the SLAB member representing Arlington High School this year. And I've just really gotten to enjoy getting to make connections with the Board of Trustees and also with the other six leaders from Arlington. And especially Mr. Hibbs, I've really gotten to enjoy to spend time with you and learn more about how AISD, how the roots work, and how everything's really, how everything is made and set up from all the meetings and bond meetings and everything we've gotten to go to. And also, just making some friendships with some other leaders that I'll be able to take away for the rest of my life. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
How y'all doing? I'm Nick Height, I'm the SLAB representative from Martin High School. I guess I just want to start off by saying thank you to all of y'all for being great mentors and just, you know, making all the great meetings we had, a lot of fun, you know, going all the different budget meetings and stuff like that. I wouldn't trade those memories for the world. But I just think that, you know, getting an opportunity to be on the SLAB board with all these different students and, you know, all these different administrators from, you know, different aspects of life, it was a really great opportunity to, you know, just kind of interact with new people and take different lessons, especially, you know, like I said, all the meetings that we went to, and then, you know, getting to do stuff like when we went and talked to the junior highs and getting to make a greater impact on, you know, the younger kids that are going to be filtering into the high schools that are going to be standing in some of our shoes right now. So, you know, like I said, I think this is a great opportunity for all of us, you know, I think I speak for all of us in getting to say we all got to, you know, experience a lot of new things, and I just wanted to thank y'all for, you know, giving me this opportunity to be with y'all. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hanin Al Sharif, I'm from Lamar High School. My favorite thing about SLAB is that it gives me the insight on how to help my community to provide students with the best resources they need to be successful. And I would like to thank the board for providing valuable advice and helping me help open numerous doors for me in my future. Thank you.
Thank you. Something Hanin also left off in talking about herself, she was also a Richard Greene scholar.
Yes.
And her SLAB partner was Bowie-Hogg. So, all the things you can think when you have a group of leaders from all of your different high schools giving you input about the place where they see every single day in and out, the partnerships and relationships they have with their other student colleagues, with their teachers, all the things you can think when they tell you some things you need to think about. Thank y'all so much for your hard work all year long, we really appreciate it. We appreciate your input, and we appreciate y'all stepping up to actually help out. If I could also just give some thanks to a few adults that participated as well. Michelle Women Sanato, thank you so much for your leadership with this group. Dr. Erin Wright, thank you for your help with this leadership. Leslie Johnson, thank you for your help. And Gretchen Maddox, thank you for your help as well. There you go. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us this evening, SLAB students. And as much as you talk about learning from this group, please be assured that we learn so very much from you. Thank you for the generosity of your time. We know you're involved in a lot of different organizations. Thank you. So, now, we come to the next item on our agenda, our new, just today, a new award-winning AISD Education Foundation presentation. Mr. White, we're so glad you're here this evening. I see you brought a few friends.
I did. We have a large contingent of people. Thank you, esteemed AISD Board of Trustees, for this opportunity to discuss the Education Foundation over the next hour, kidding, of course. Although, it has been a record-breaking year under the leadership of Board President Chad Bates. Chad, please stand up. And as I call everyone's name, I'll have them stand up and please give them a round of applause. We have two founders with us, Dan Diaperd and Ann Morris is a founder, and she currently serves on the board as well. Laura Jones. David Willbanks. Paul Folks. Diane Patrick. Elizabeth Calvo. Mike Jarrett. Did I leave by accident, I'll leave anyone off? Linda Diaperd. Linda Diaperd. Thank you. I'd also like to introduce Executive Assistant Amanda Sullins. It is because of this great group of community servant leaders that we have had unprecedented, record-breaking success. As Jamie mentioned, we were honored to receive the Outstanding Nonprofit Organization of the Year Award today, the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, and indeed, humbled by that award because we know we're up against a lot of great nonprofit organizations for that award. Our mission is, at the Arlington AISD Education Foundation, to serve the students, teachers, and staff of AISD by fulfilling extraordinary educational needs and initiatives. This group that I just introduced and many more are very committed to public education and AISD, and we understand the challenges that face us with 70% economically disadvantaged, but we look at those challenges as opportunities because, as Dr. Cavassos says, education is the great equalizer. And we look as that to provide an education opportunities for investments in our future and the future of Arlington. Our history and impact, we were founded in 1994, 1995 school year. We're celebrating our 23rd anniversary. Since our founding, we have distributed 1.83 million back to AISD. Actually, that number keeps going up. And so, at the end of this fiscal year, I think that's a conservative estimate. We should be able to have even higher number. As you can see, we're fast approaching the $2 million milestone on what we've given back to AISD in classroom grants, academic initiatives, and recognition programs. We're working to support the education of every child by awarding program project funds through competitive grant process. This most recent grant cycle in December, we had 55 grant applications totaling more than $359,000. So, under the leadership of Chair Diane Patrick, who oversaw Grants Review Committee, it's comprised of board members and community volunteers, they really had a tough job scoring some really worthy grant applications and went through that process. We also partner with other organizations to secure additional resources for student programs, and we serve as a conduit to secure specified sources of funding for the district, and we're looking continually at opportunities to help AISD in that capacity. We got off to a great start in the fall of our fiscal year last year, our Terrelgate-Arlington Wild Wild West event, and raised at that time a record-breaking amount of $170,000 from the evening, and also recognized our newly awarded Texas Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Marcelo Cavassos, who had just received that award. So, that was really timely at that time, a great event. Our prize patrol and our classroom instruction grants, what we're known for throughout our founding and our mission. Every campus in AISD has now received a grant with the exception of two campuses, and that's McNutt and Peach. And we're hoping we can fulfill those grant awards soon to those new campuses. This year, we had a record-breaking amount distributed to 21 campuses of 97,107. And those grants ranged from a number of different things, you know, clearly literacy programs. There was a media club at Miller Elementary that not only provided video announcements, but also were able to communicate with deaf students there that were housed there at Miller Elementary. It also funded for the Sam Houston Orchestra, the strings group, a STEM Academy math conditioning camp that will be going on this summer. And it's kind of modeled after what you consider athletic training camp, but a really, really neat thing there. And we also were able to award a Star Gentlemen's Group at Spirit Elementary, which is a neat thing there for the 6th grade young men. So, from those 55 grant applications, Diane Patrick assembled a great team to review those grant applications, and we're able to select from those. And we hope continually that we'll be able to ramp up our support in classroom instruction grants. This particular year, our Board of Directors voted unanimously to invest $52,707. We'll be having an announcement soon on that in the AISD High Quality Pre-K 3 Initiative. And we know that the state gives funding for Pre-K 4, but we understand, of course, the state does not provide funding for the Pre-K 3 in terms of training. And we consider this a great return on investment to provide the opportunity for these young students to be kindergarten-ready because we know what studies tell us about if you don't have your literacy skills up to par by third grade, it could lead to bad things. And we definitely want to invest in our kids' future and make sure that they are ready to hit the ground running and succeed when they're in kindergarten. Baylor Orthopedic, we received one of our largest gifts ever in the history of our foundation of $100,000. We'll also be having an announcement of that soon, but that gift will be benefiting our students in health occupation and our athletic sports medicine as well. So, they are extremely generous, and we're proud to partner with them and hope to establish even more- some really worthy grant applications and went through that process. We also partner with other organizations to secure additional resources for student programs and we serve as a conduit to secure specified sources of funding for the district. And we're looking continually at opportunities to help AISD in that capacity. We got off to a great start in the fall of our fiscal year last year, our Terrelgate-Arlington Wild Wild West event, and raised at that time a record-breaking amount of $170,000 from the evening and also recognized our newly awarded Texas Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Marcelo Cavasso's, who had just received that award. So, that was really timely at that time, a great event. Our prize patrol and our classroom instruction grants, what we're known for throughout our founding and our mission. Every campus in AISD has now received a grant with the exception of two campuses, and that's McNutt and Peach. And we're hoping we can fulfill those grant awards soon to those new campuses. This year, we had a record-breaking amount distributed to 21 campuses of 97,107. And those grants ranged from a number of different things, you know, clearly literacy programs. There was a media club at Miller Elementary that not only provided video announcements, but also were able to communicate with deaf students there that were housed there at Miller Elementary. It also funded for the Sam Houston Orchestra, the Strings Group, a STEM Academy Math Conditioning Camp that will be going on this summer. And it's kind of modeled after what you consider Athletic Training Camp, but a really, really neat thing there. And we also were able to award a Star Gentlemen's Group at Spear Elementary, which is a neat thing there for the sixth grade young men. So, from those 55 grant applications, Diane Patrick assembled a great team to review those grant applications and were able to select from those. And we hope continually that we'll be able to ramp up our support in classroom instruction grants. This particular year, our Board of Directors voted unanimously to invest $52,707. We'll be having an announcement soon on that in the AISD High Quality Pre-K3 Initiative. And we know that the state gives funding for Pre-K4, but we understand, of course, the state does not provide funding for the Pre-K3 in terms of training. And we consider this a great return on investment to provide the opportunity for these young students to be kindergarten-ready because we know what studies tell us about if you don't have your literacy skills up to par by third grade, it could lead to bad things. And we definitely want to invest in our kids' future and make sure that they are ready to hit the ground running and succeed when they're in kindergarten. Baylor Orthopedic, we received one of our largest gifts ever in the history of our foundation of $100,000. We'll also be having an announcement of that soon, but that gift will be benefiting our students in health occupation and our athletic sports medicine as well. So, they are extremely generous and we're proud to partner with them and hope to establish even more partnerships that will benefit AISD. Well, most recently too, we had a spring special event. Chad and Joy Bates started this event four years ago and we've seen great success in developing that from our spring grant at Six Flags. It's called AISD Education Celebration. We had a record-breaking, raised a record-breaking $275,000 from this event. So, we're really excited. Of that, we're going to have $32,000 in checks that will go in undesignated income back to our AISD schools. We just, this is hot off the presses, we have a Bank of America grant, a $20,000 investment to the Career Tech Center, Career Readiness Program, so that students will be provided the proper preparation for job interviews, including, you know, appropriate clothing, getting help with the resumes, mock interviews, and seminars. So, we're really excited about this partnership with Bank of America. As you can see from this chart, here's the breakdown in income distribution to academic initiatives over the last four years. Last year, we had a record-breaking 20399 given back to AISD. This is actually a conservative estimate. We underestimated when we made this bar graph at 275. We're going to surpass the $300,000 mark now in what we give back to AISD. Just a few of the highlights. Terrelgate-Arlington, again, $170,000, record-breaking at that time, the Pre-K3 investment, the Baylor Orthopedic gift that will benefit our health occupation and our sports medicine students. The record-breaking, another record-breaking event that surpassed the previous one at 275,000 for Education Celebration and the 32,000 going back to the schools. Our record-breaking amount in giving in classroom instruction grants to 21 campuses, our Bank of America grant, and most recently, of course, today, the Arlington Chamber of Commerce Nonprofit of the Year. So, we've got a lot of record-breaking success and this is all due to an outstanding community servant leaders, those that I introduced and many more that are passionately committed to seeing that our educators and our students have the opportunity, every opportunity to succeed. We're also hopefully going to unveil a new initiative regarding our employee campaign in the fall and we'll be addressing that hopefully at the AISD Principals Meeting later on. And we're modeling, modeling after other successful school districts throughout the state. So, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Fantastic. Mr. White, thank you so much for being here this evening. You know, any one of the items that you've shown would have been something that we'd be certainly very excited about, and then they just keep coming. And we look around AISD and Arlington Education Foundation and you see some of the most engaged, energetic, can-do people. I mean, you have quite a team. And we are not, our teachers, our students are the lucky beneficiaries of your work. It seemed like it wasn't that long ago, colleagues, that we were up here hearing about a $1 million mark, right? It doesn't seem like it was that long ago. Remember, there was $100,000 bars, I never forget that. So, and now we are, you're approaching, you're approaching 2 million.
2 million.
And it just seems like it was just in the blink of an eye. And so, the synergy and the team that's building and the can-do attitude is changing lives and accelerating our strategic plan and giving our teachers opportunities that they just wouldn't have. So, huge rounds of applause. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
A lot of good stuff tonight, guys. We'll now move to our appointments and then after that, there'll be a short break while we talk, while we greet the new appointees. Dr. Cavasso's.
Thank you, President Solins, and I'd like to recommend the board appoint the individuals discussed in closed session. Two Assistant Principals for Bailey Junior High and one Assistant Principal for Spear Elementary.
I move that we accept. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hibbs and a second by Dr. Rice. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees felt affirmative. Dr. Cavasso's.
Thank you, President Solins, and I'd like to first introduce the Assistant Principal, one of the Assistant Principals for Bailey Junior High, Mr. Dennis Hearn. Dennis attended the University of Texas at Arlington, received his Bachelor of Arts in History, University of Texas at Arlington, for his Master of Education in Ed Leadership. Most recently, Assistant Principal in Friendship ISD, has taught US, American history and world history in Friendship ISD. Dennis, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much. Again, I appreciate it. President Solins, Dr. Cavasso, and members of the board. I really appreciate the opportunity you've given me to work with the students here at Arlington ISD. This is my first acceptance speech and I've seen them go horribly wrong on TV before, so I'll keep it short. I appreciate Mrs. Benavides and the entire leadership team at Bailey Junior High giving me this opportunity. It was great to visit with them and interview with them and I know the kind of tradition they have there and the kind of student success that goes on there. So, I can't wait to help them and continue to grow and grow leaders there as well. And so, I really appreciate them. There's a lot of Bailey people here tonight, which is awesome. Little intimidating. I appreciate them coming out and I appreciate my dad and brother, Richard and Brian Hearn, for being here as well. My dad's the creepy guy recording me over here. I tried to tell him it's on YouTube, but he still wanted to do it, so. I appreciate it again and thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Next, I'd like to introduce an Assistant Principal for Bailey Junior High, Ms. Ebony Ebony attended University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Kinesiology, University of Texas at Arlington for Master of Education in Ed Leadership. Most recently, Assistant Principal at Arlington High School, has taught physical education at Bailey Junior High and physical education also in China. So, Ebony, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. President Solins, Dr. Cavasso, Board members, good evening. This is bittersweet. This is, this is bittersweet because I say farewell to my Colt family, but I get to say hello. Welcome to the Bailey Junior High. To my Colt family. I see my Colt family over here. I got to talk to them first. I thank you for allowing me to serve as an Assistant Principal for the past four years. Mr. Dalla, thank you for your leadership. AP Steam, I won't cry. I love you. I love you and thank you for your support. To the teachers, to the faculty, I have, and to the students, I have some teachers and one of the students back there. I thank you for pushing me to be better. I thank you for the relationships. I will miss, I will miss you all. To my Colt, or to my Bailey family. To my Bailey family, I am so excited. Mrs. Benavides, thank you so much for the opportunity to allow me to pour into our teachers and to pour into our students and to carry out your vision for the campus. Bailey, I, I, I'm excited. There's a simple saying, at Colt Country, we say, "How sweet it is," and at Bailey, we say, "It's simply the best." So, Colts, how sweet it was to serve you as your Assistant Principal for the past four years. Bailey Junior High, how it's simply the best to say, "I'm coming back home." And so, thank you so much for this evening.
Ms. Nix, did you want to introduce anybody?
I did. I thought I'd help you a little bit.
Rewind. To my darling, darling husband. Sam Nix, thank you so much for your support. And to Stevie Nix, thank you sweetheart, just for being a joy in our life. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Spear Elementary, Ms. Danita Danita attended Stephen F. Austin to receive her Bachelor of Arts in Speech Communications, Dallas Baptist University for Master of Arts in School Counseling. Most recently, the counselor at Webb Elementary, has taught special education, has been a special education coordinator, has taught fifth and sixth grade inclusion and fourth and fifth grade resource and also third grade and seventh grade. Ebony, congratulations. I'm sorry. Danita, congratulations.
Thank you. To President Solins, members of the board, and Dr. Cavasso's, thank you for this opportunity. As Assistant Principal of Spear Elementary, it is my mission to emerge, evolve, to be the leader that empowers others, to thrive, invest, create, push towards a common vision that only elevates, eliminates fixed mindsets, and illuminates growth. A vision that will no longer be stagnant or mediocre, but determined to let each child and teacher know their value, worth, and potential. A vision that rises against the statistics and is determined to bring victory to all, all students, parents, teachers, staff, and administration, developing stepping stones that creates opportunities to answer the call, the call to do better, be better, show better, and produce better than what was before. Emerging to be the best that I can be so I can lead others to fly to their victory. As a product of Arlington Independent School District, myself attending Dunn Elementary, Young Junior High, and Martin High School, it is of great honor to be a servant leader for this wonderful school district. I thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for strategically and intentionally placing me in places to allow me to grow in knowledge and preparation to this point and beyond, to all of my fellow educators at Webb Elementary and all of my past principals and administrators there who have helped me become the leader that I am today. I thank my parents for their continuous modeling of selfless service to others and showing me the importance of moral values and that they're right here. And I thank my husband who continuously supports me with all of my endeavors and contributes wholeheartedly in making sure that our family is well-kept as I do so, and he is also here. And to my precious babies who understand that God has given me enough love for them. There's another one. She turned back for the bathroom. They have, they understand that God has given me enough love for them and for the hundreds of other babies that I touch on a daily basis. And to my precious grandmother who is not here, but she has continued to plant a seed repeatedly in my head. Through all of my years growing up, she always said, "Someone needs to speak for the children." And I thank her and that kind of guides me throughout everything I do. I pledge to continuously speak for the children, our future leaders, and all that I do as Assistant Principal at Spear. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. As is our custom, if the appointees would follow Mr. Cale out to the lobby to form a receiving line, we will be out to meet and greet you. And if the audience could please give us the board a moment to step, to get out so that we can return and get back to work, we will take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Thank you. And for this next discussion, I would like to combine Action Item A and Action Item B together, consider the approval of teacher probationary term contracts and also for administrative and professional staff. Dr. Cavasso's.
Thank you, President Solins, and I'd like to recommend that the board consider the teacher and administrator probationary and term contracts.
President Solins, I move to approve Action Items A and B.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Hudson and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All trustees felt affirmative. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Cavasso's. We'll move now to Action Item C, Consider Tasby Local Policy Update 107 and Board Policy DC Local. Dr. Cavasso's.
Thank you, President Solins, and the board committee, as well as we've had two board meetings where we've had these policies for discussion, and tonight we bring them for action.
Mr. Hogg.
Yeah, thank you, President Solins. And before I make a motion, I'd just like to say, as Dr. Cavasso says, we've discussed this a couple of times, had some revisions on a policy update for 107. The only thing when we would like to recommend is we pulled out the policy over crowdfunding and we're being asked for that to be a procedure. So, we would like to see that procedure come back so the board can review that, determine if a policy needs to be created from that, if it needs to roundabout back to that. And that can just be sent out to the board.
To the committee?
Yes, to the committee. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
And so, with that, I'd make a motion, I move to approve Tasby Policy, Policy Update 107.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hogg and a second by Ms. Hudson. Any further discussion? Please vote. All trustees felt affirmative. Thank you very much. We will move to Action Item D, Consider and Take Action on a Resolution Appointing Consultants and Directing Staff and Consultants to Prepare for the Issuance and Sale of Bonds. That's a long action item description. Dr. Cavasso's.
President Solins, we'd like to recommend Action Item D as proposed.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hudson and a second by Mr. Hibbs to approve the action item as presented. Any discussion? Please vote. All trustees vote in affirmative. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sol. Can't say one.
Absolutely. Ms. Hogg.
I could quickly do like the House and call parliamentary inquiry, which, sorry, I've been watching the House and the Senate almost every single day and it seems like they make parliamentary inquiries. I just wanted to go back on our policy action MC. I didn't say Board Policy DC Local. If any board member was not aware of that, please let us know and we can revote. Otherwise, my intent was to include the policy 107 and DC Local on that.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. I think, I think that was in the beginning of the description, just want to be sure. Are there any other trustees that had any concern or that was what their intent on their vote?
And Dr. Cavasso mentioned, I just forgot to say it right at the very end.
Better, better to be accurate. I absolutely agree, Mr. Hogg. So, we next then would move to our open forum. We do not have any, oh, the, open forum for agenda items, but we don't have any open forum, we don't have any items for that, we already covered that. So, the next we'd go to then consent. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then there'll be the items as presented. Ms. Powell.
President Solins, board members, Dr. Cavasso's. This evening, there are 12 bids on the agenda for your consideration and in all cases, the administration recommends the low bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district. We also have donations to report this evening totaling $32,200 and that brings our year-to-date total to $714,061.
Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Is there a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Rice and a second by Ms. Mays. Is any further discussion? Please vote. All trustees felt affirmative. Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items and we have four cards this evening. Just a minute, I've got, I don't have the script card. Just a moment, please. I'll read from this one. Okay, now we come to the open forum for non-agenda items. This is a routine part. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with trustees on items that are not on the agenda this evening. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply directly to speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. I have four cards. Your name, when your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. Our first speaker, Louis Castillo.
Good evening, the president, board president, Solins and staff. My name is Louis Castillo, and I'd like to just take a few minutes, opportunity here to point out some sort of preliminary procedures that been happening in the past two addresses that I've done before the board, being abruptly interrupted by, like, you know, on the side, there's like a, an annoying barking chihuahua that interrupts my talk, and I think the board president should restore order as the, as chair of the assembly. Once the board president recognizes the speaker, I have the floor, and, and no one has the, the right to interrupt the speaker, and the chair, the board president should restore order. Now, if the school board attorney has an issue with the contents of my talk, then there's an avenue for that. But if I don't recognize if I'm being interrupted, you know, and I think the last, before, last time the board president interrupted me, that in the sense that you want to clarify whether I was talking about a personnel issue. Well, I think that every, anyone who serves as board president should have a, some lesson, some sort of an idea of what's a personnel issue beforehand and not interrupt the speaker, you know, and, and I think that unless, that the intent is to, to disrupt. But I'm, but I'm saying that, that we need to follow preliminary law and procedure, and the interruptions I've been getting in the past two addresses, addresses that I've done here have been out of order, and I think that board has, the board president has failed to restore order. I got into a little verbal chat with the school board attorney, and he interrupted me, and I think that if I have the floor, like now, I mean, I have the floor, and I shouldn't be interrupted. Now, like I said, and I'll reemphasize this, there's something wrong with the contents, and there's not, no need for that. But if I don't yield the floor to the school board attorney, maybe he needs to be escorted out by the police for disrupting me. So I'd just like to point that out, that in the future, that we maintain the preliminary law and procedures in place, that if someone interrupts the speaker, that it is incumbent upon the board president to restore order, because you know the speaker has the floor. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ms. Libby Broyles.
I'm an elementary school teacher. I came with anger charged. My name is Libby Broyles, and I've been teaching for AISD since 1980. I was blessed to stay home for some years with my own babies, and then came back to teaching, as that has been my desire, dream, and dedication since I was seven years old. I'm retiring this year, not because I'm too old or not have the energy, but because the focus of education has been distorted from children to numbers. So much of what is stressed to the classroom teacher is all based on numbers and percentages, though most of your employees were hired for their degrees in education. We are not analysts and statisticians. We care more about the child than we do the numbers. My desire and dedication to molding the hearts and minds of children has not diminished, but my dream of how and that should and can be accomplished has been chopped away bit by bit in the past few years. I know that our country and our state are partly to blame, but I see this school district has certainly contributed to my shattered dream. There's so little respect shown to the employees of this district, not by the principals and assistant principals, but by the administrator's central office, and especially by parents. In our faculty's presentation of customer service, we were told, "The customer is the one who determines what is right," and in no uncertain terms, it was presented that parents are the customers. I am an education professional, and most parents are not. My judgments and decisions should be supported and upheld by this district instead of acquiescing to the parents in most cases. The customer service training was a demeaning, belittling affront to a teacher's character, morals, and maturity as professionals. We were mandated last year by the central office to follow this very specified schedule. It shows 420-minute day with a 15-minute leeway for travel time to and from the class to the cafeteria, playground, and fine arts room. All of this is based on numbers, studies, surveys, theories, that determine what a school day should look like. However, this schedule was proposed by someone who probably, possibly has not spent any time in an elementary classroom. Please note that it takes one full hour of class time from curriculum planning for INE, WNTIME, whatever you want to call our small groups. Perhaps some classes schools need that time built in, but once again, as professionals, let us please make that determination. This schedule does not take into account an elementary bathroom visit, water fountain visits, counseling with a child whose parents just split up, the death of their favorite pet, the new backpack that hasn't stuck zipper, behavior problems, and their favorite pink pencil that's gone missing and now we must find. Does anyone take this into consideration? We have been forced into the reality that many children come to school without proper parenting. We have taken on that added responsibility. We do it day in and day out with love, understanding, and compassion, but where is the time to address these needs in this schedule? We are professionals. We know what our students need. If you're studying the numbers, you'll be falsely led to believe that the number of office referrals and Level III misbehaviors has decreased due to Pbis. However, we can tell you as classroom teachers that the discipline has not improved, but the process in which the teachers are allowed to report an office referral has changed. More paperwork and steps to follow on our part before we can hold a student accountable for their part. I hope that the numbers would also reflect that there has been an increase in how many students now come to us with severe emotional and disruptive behavior, even violent behavior. There needs to be more in-class support and special education assistance to cover the needs of these children. It is detrimental for the teacher's ability to teach, for the other 20 students in class, and for the education of that own particular student. Having more assistance would aid in the inclusion process. Perhaps the money spent on the administrators and principals going to Chicago this year for Pbis conference, or the group that went to Arizona for the PL Conference, PLC Conference, maybe that money would have been better spent on additional teachers. Which of you has returned to your office after the summer break, or after any break, and your office looks like this? Keep in mind, you have your desk, 24-student desk, 24-student chairs, three book carts, a printer, a copier, two bookshelves, and you find it looking like this. All the furniture pursed to one side, and then you are expected to put it back. Is this how professionals are treated? This is how many teachers return to AISD classrooms every August after their district's cleaning crews have come through this, through their building. Don't forget also the 20, the 57 acronyms that is part of our job these days that we have to keep track of, and my secondary colleagues, I'm sure, could add to that. You want to be a premier school district, then act like you have premier employees, because you already do. Don't ask me as a retiring employee to take a day off to the teaching for my exit interview. It was not an interview. I did not give any questions or answers. I signed two papers and then was sent on my way. These are not just issues that I'm concerned with, but I hear from other classroom teachers. We are the voice and the advocates for what we see down in the trenches, day in and day out. Trust our professional judgment. I've struggled with how to present these issues without appearing to be a whiny grouch. I'm afraid that many of you will still perceive that anyway. I would prefer to think it's a positive experience with a positive outcome. I hope to substitute this coming year so that I can continue my joy of teaching, but not with the frustration with the feeling I still have. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Our third speaker is Jaylee Thompson.
Hello, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. My name is Jaylee Thompson, and I live at 5408 Ridge Springs Court, 76017. I'm addressing you today because of my concerns for the Martin volleyball coaching staff. Over the last year and a half, we have made, we have had multiple incidences occur with current coaches at the MHS High School. The 2015 and 16 school year was my daughter's freshman year. She made the JV. She was, the first major incident that occurred was the school season had ended and the club season had just begun. The conditioning for offseason at MHS is somewhat ridiculous, and the girls getting hurt, the girls were getting hurt left and right. Our daughter had just made the top travel team at Texas Image, and her practice schedule was ridiculous, along with the conditioning that was expected at the high school. She ended up with several injuries, and this was all at the beginning of the club season. But hers were not even the worst of the injuries. One of her teammates at MHS ended up with a fractured foot due to what I think was the negligence of the coaches. This is when we tried to make an appointment with the coach. She told my husband that she would not speak with us until she had spoken to the student. The very next day after practice, all the coaches cornered my daughter and treated her, ganged up on her like a bunch of high school clique of mean girls. There were only two of them that spoke to her, and they kept asking, "So what did you tell your daddy?" And they kept telling her that, "I'm sorry, I don't think you have the mental capacity for this game. I don't think you, I think you're only getting hurt because, because of your own fault. It is not any fault of ours." My daughter almost came to tears a few times, but managed to hold them back and try to steer the conversation back on point. When the coaches ended the meeting, they told her again that conditioning is what it is and it will not change, and asked her, "So what are you going to go tell your daddy now?" And they made her repeat what they had just told her. They talked to her, all three grown women, ganged up on her, a 14-year-old girl. This is a brief example of the intimidation and bullying behavior of these coaches. I have gone into more details of this incident in the packets that I've given each and every one of you. Because of the parents, because of one of the parents went to the campus AD and explained everything had changed, AD and complained, everything changed during that offseason conditioning before we had a chance to report it. Unfortunately, the good behavior only lasted until the start of the next season. My daughter continued to be the target of the coach's bullying. We had some long heartfelt conversations with our daughter about whether or not to report it. All the while, all the while, our daughter didn't want us to go to anyone. She didn't want to cause a stink. She didn't want to jeopardize her playing time, and she kept telling us she could take it. It wasn't until hearing another child's story about what she had to go through and the bullying that she endured, that our daughter came to us and said, even though that she could take it, she knew that other girls couldn't, and what about them? Since then, I've spoken to no less than 45 parents and students and listened to their stories. The longstanding history of systemic bullying and intimidation that has allowed, that has been allowed to go on is absolutely appalling. I have been meeting with the principal and administration about this and many other incidences since August of last year. I find it extremely frustrating that this process to get our complaints heard seems so purposefully difficult. In addition, our frustration doubled when we were told five months into this process that the formal complaint process is the one that is taken more seriously. This information is buried deep within the AISD website. You must know what you're looking for in order to find it. I would like to make a strong suggestion that this information be more readily available to parents, because right now it seems extremely top secret. Lastly, I'd like to touch on the fact that every single letter, meeting, and conversation, correspondence, besides that of me and my family, was supposed to be anonymous. It was extremely difficult to get these parents and students to come forward because they were, they were fear of retribution from these coaches. You will find in several highlighted portions of letters and correspondence that refer to the anonymity. A few weeks ago, it came to my attention that the coach had reached out to several past, past students mentioned in one of the parent's letters. It was not a coincidence, the coach referred to the letter in these conversations. I have since heard from the principal, who told me that she did not pass on any letters. However, when the email was explaining exactly how I knew that at least one letter, if not all, had been passed on, I CC'd the assistant superintendent and the superintendent and never received any response.
Ms. Thompson, your time is up.
Okay. The passing on of these letters is a direct conflict in the protection of our children.
Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker, I hope I pronounced this right, Jennifer Parzial.
I'm a little bit nervous. I haven't done this before.
Oh, that's okay. It's okay.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Jennifer Parzial. I live at 3412 Steeplewood Trail, two blocks away from Martin High School. We originally moved from Texas, to Texas from California nine years ago. We thoroughly researched the better school districts and decided to settle in the Arlington Martin School District because of Martin High School. Initially, we loved our AISD experience so much that we bought a house two blocks away from Martin High School. That all changed when my eldest daughter played volleyball for Martin in her ninth grade year. It was a very eye-opening experience and a not, a positive one at all. My daughter was interested in the IB program, which we had heard nothing about in ninth grade, so we decided, okay, we're going to transfer to be in that program, and we transferred to Lamar High School. It was then that she experienced verbal abuse, bullying, and she was cussed out by the volleyball And that experience made her decision to transfer, because she was going back and forth because she loved her friends at Martin much easier. She was and is a D1 recruit, and she wanted to be ready academically for the rigorous college academics as a student athlete, and so, you know, that's what her decision was based on. Now, four years later, I have an eighth grader at Young Junior High who made ACE's top travel team and had her heart set on when she moved here being a Martin Warrior. I am not willing to gamble her mental or physical safety by subjecting her to the intimidation, bullying, verbal abuse that permeates the Martin volleyball program. Even though it is a hardship, I am willing to drive 30 minutes, because I have a special needs child also who goes to Webb Elementary, and I'm doing this so that she can have a positive, safe, and empowering high school experience both academically and athletically. And I'm not here to speak to you today just about my child, but every past child, child that is there now, and every child is going to go through this program. This isn't a case of parents not liking a coach, her coaching style, or even wanting a coach to be fired from teaching. This has to do with the fact that it's absolutely not acceptable for coaches to verbally intimidate, bully, and cultivate an extremely toxic culture in their sports, their sports program. Coaches should be role models for their athletes, not cultivating an environment where this behavior is acceptable. They also are responsible in-season for the integrity of their athletes, not turning a blind eye to rampant alcohol and drug abuse during the season. These athletes not only represent their high school, but they represent AISD as a whole. The time for overlooking coaches that intimidate, bully, and verbally abuse our children is over. There is a huge difference between coaching for improvement and bullying, and you can look at Lamar's successful volleyball program, and you can see a huge difference between the two. We need coaches that act like adults and model appropriate behavior, coaches that are accountable for their own behavior and that of our athletes. We need coaches that support and encourage and facilitate growth in our athletes, not those whose coaching style routinely verbally and mentally tear them down. I know that the Martin volleyball coach has her supporters, the girls and the parents that have been her favorites. These girls were unscathed by the abuse and have been fortunate enough to escape the bullying, intimidation, and verbal abuse, but whether they are willing to come forward or not, they have all witnessed this behavior. I also find it disturbing that there have been serious complaints against this coach for years. I know for a fact that even before my daughter was a freshman, which was five years ago, there were serious complaints about these same issues. Unfortunately, the parents were never given proper information to pursue these complaints formally. All of these serious complaints were brushed under the rug either by the AD or principal due to the confusing rule- Due to the confusing rules, procedures and timeframes, we were never informed on how to file a formal complaint properly within the time constraints. I know that from all of the email exchanges that you'll see in the paperwork that you have, um, that there are so many other parents and former students that feel the same way. And I just hope that when you read the letters, you're not going to gamble on a coach that does these things. You're going to invest in our kids.
That is the, all of the cards we have this evening for non-agenda open forum. And that brings us to our next item on our agenda this evening, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Cavasso.
Thank you, President Solins. I'd like to share some information about our district. First, we held the, uh, it's coming up. We held the groundbreaking ceremony for the Agricultural Science Center, April 7th. And we're joined by elected officials from Delverton Gardens in Arlington and many of our FFA students as well. Next, the annual Teacher of the Year banquet was held on April 11th and it was a wonderful evening celebrating all 77 of our Teachers of the Year. The banquet is a small way that we show our appreciation for teachers and that these wonderful Teacher of the Years represent. We're so appreciative of their hours and service to our students. Also this week is Teacher Appreciation Week and take a special moment to thank all our teachers throughout the school system for their wonderful service that they provide. And here we go. That's the Teacher of the Year banquet. It was fun celebrating and sending off Sam Houston High School Soccer Team for the second time in three years. These gentlemen made the entire city proud as we were rooting for them, as they represented the district and the city. Congratulations on an outstanding season, Sam Houston Soccer. This morning, Ms. Solins and I were able to surprise Coach Rodriguez with his opportunity to throw out the first pitch at the AISD Night at the Rangers game on May the 12th. And he has, he felt a little pressured and will be nervous, but I'm sure he'll do well to throw that first pitch and get it to the catcher. Miller Elementary celebrated its 35th anniversary with a program on April the 18th. It's an outstanding, uh, celebration and of their anniversary. We had orchestra and other students perform, uh, former teachers and administrators. Thank you, Miller Elementary, for making that 35th anniversary so special. Congratulations to our April Teachers of the Month. Honorees were Cookin Education Center, Ken Foster, pre-K teacher, Young Junior High School, Jennifer O'Mania, and Lamar High School, Maggie Loudermilk. Uh, these teachers help our students succeed every day and the Teacher of the Month, uh, just really outstanding. The students are genuinely proud of their teachers every time we go into the classroom, even the pre-K students. And they were trying to understand what were we doing in their classroom, uh, but they love their teacher, Mr. Foster there. We also recognized our food service employees with Food Service Appreciation Week in late April. I want to thank our food service employees and we heard a great presentation by Jackie Anderson, uh, last board meeting, for all that they do for the overall health and well-being of our students. Our food service staff is simply outstanding and they make a difference, so thank you. We're happy to present the Pantego Lions Club with a Community Engaged for Excellence Award appreciation last week. The Pantego Lions Club partners with Hill, South Davis and Bailey to honor and support our students and able to give them a district update. Uh, and this is a wonderful organization that supports our students. Congratulations to all our Media Fair winners. Our Best of Show included these fine students from Shackelford Junior High on your left and then, um, also from Pope Elementary on your right. So congratulations, and this was an exceptional opportunity to recognize our students with all their technology skills and the hard work that they put into their, uh, programs. Last Friday, we celebrated the Career and Technical Center topping out luncheon with a tour and a signing of a beam. And Cindy and I are signing that beam. Others were able to join us for that. We had all the individuals who were working at the building at the time assembled there for a luncheon, uh, and they were encouraged to continue their safety program and things like that. So wonderful opportunity and we look forward to the Career Tech Center opening in August. Finally, What's Your Big Idea Contest was held at UTA or the recognition was held on the Entrepreneurship Day. Hundreds of students participated. It was a wonderful event to congratulate all our students and shake all of their hands as they came across the stage and, and very proud of their work. Uh, this is an opportunity for them to excel even beyond the classroom. So congratulations to all our students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Dr. Cavasso. Are there board members with reports this evening? Ms. Walton.
Thank you, President Solins. It has been a very busy week. Uh, I, I too enjoyed the topping out ceremony at the Career Tech Center. That was something, I had never, ever participated in anything like that and it was, it was wonderful. I think, uh, the thing I brought away from there with was that, uh, we have not had, knock wood, uh, any safety in injuries from, you know, it's been a very safe environment to work in and, um, our construction crew out there has been very diligent about that and I, and I know a lot of credit goes to, um, our Kelly Horn out here too that is overseeing so many things, including that big job. Um, the, I also attended the Media Fair and showcase. I have never seen those two double ball, that double ballroom at the PDC so full of people. It was standing room only, children in people's laps, everybody, you know, along the walls. It, it was pretty exciting and all the rooms were full of the showcase things. And as you saw, there were some happy winners. My favorite part of that was, uh, Dr. Cavasso's and Chad were shaking their hands as they went by and some of these kids were kind of little and didn't quite grasp the concept. So, great job catching small children as they blasted across the stage. The, uh, Corey Academy had their, a work of art extravaganza at the Levitt Pavilion, again, packed. They could not have held that at Corey because there were so many people. Beautiful night, uh, the, the acts went off like clockwork. Somebody was going off after they'd finished and somebody else was coming on and it just flowed beautifully. But all of this, and of course, the Miller 35, um, 35th anniversary was wonderful with all of those kids. I sat there and thought, okay, how many years is it before they can be in that Martin High School honors orchestra that went to, you know, Hasby, um, that big group? But it just brings home to me how important it is for us to get that Fine Arts Center built so that there is room for all of these things to go on and everybody to have a seat, hopefully. So, uh, we have another full week ahead of us with many other things. May is busy, but we are blessed.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Ms. Mays?
Thank you very much. I will reserve all of my time to just, um, talk about Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, so I was thinking about what I would like to say. I was reminded of something that my father, God rest his soul, used to tell my mom on Easter Sunday. Honey, why don't we not go to church this Sunday to save room for those who haven't been all the other Sundays for the year? And that always resonated with me. And when Teacher Appreciation Week came up, I thought the same thing. I thought, you know what? It, it's important that we let our teachers know how much we appreciate them all year long and we truly do appreciate them all year long. And allow this as a week of opportunity to remind those who have not had an opportunity to stop and thank a teacher for what they have done for our students. And personally, I would just like to say thank you. My oldest son came home from college yesterday and I'm so happy to have him back in the house. But he just talked about his experience and reinforced how well his teachers had done on teaching him, based on how well he did his freshman year with a sports schedule and still maintaining a 3.8. I'm so proud and that is very thankful to the teachers that invested their time in my son, of which I will have another one graduating this year. So hopefully next year I'll get to say the same thing about my other son coming home from college. But the last thing I just want to say is that, uh, teachers are not in it for the income. They are in it for the outcome. And thank you for the outcome that y'all have made, so positive for so many students, for us, for my kids. Really appreciate it. So happy teacher's appreciation year long.
Thank you very much. Well said. Okay. And are there other board members with reports? Mr. Secretary?
Yes, ma'am. I will mention that I did go out to our archery range today at Little, or the old Little Elementary. And, um, not very many people even realize that we have a program that we started two years ago. And within two years, it went from zero to 400 students. Next year, it's going to surpass 600 students in archery. The two years that, that it's began, they've been state champions two years in a row. And we've had, uh, several that have gone on to be national champ, champions. We've got some amazing things happening throughout our district in that way. President Solins, uh, as you know, I'm Chair of the Audit Committee. Myself, Keisha Mays, or Ms. Mays and Ms. Hudson, um, today we, um, asked that the administration brings us in one of the, um, summer month presentations, a full review of the PBIS system, uh, program that we have. We'd like to see the stats that goes along with it and the status of, um, of the program itself, uh, just so we can have a full understanding and, and do a review before we start into the next calendar year.
Very good. Thank you very much. And it is 8:57 and this meeting is adjourned.